I want to take this opportunity to welcome everyone to our September 3 zoning hearing. We have a short agenda this morning, so with that said, I'm going to ask Officer Odd if he would come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a small crowd here considering how we usually have a room full. This morning, as I said, the agenda is small, but we're going to, John, I'm going to give it over to you to explain the rules and regulations, but we're going to start very first after you explain the rules and regulations, and we're going to have a public hearing to call forth on the small cell that really is not in our ordinance, but as a courtesy, we pass it on to the Board of Commissioners. So with that, John, would you explain all the rules and regulations?
Okay. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When each case is called, will the applicant please stand and raise their hand and signify that they are in attendance? Then we're going to call to see if anyone here is opposed to the case. We would ask the opposition also stand and raise their hand so they can be counted for the official record. After recognizing the applicant and the opposition, both parties will be asked to come forward to be sworn in so they can present testimony to the board. Each side will get 10 minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a process for rebuttal, and there's not a process to reserve your time, so convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if more than one person wishes to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about because each side only gets 10 minutes and you don't want to cover the same information twice. Then after the 10-minute presentation period, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. In front of the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for questions or comments. And after that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the case at hand. There are two cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn and will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-55 of 2019, Mount Reserve LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice by staff and will not be heard. Second case is LEP-18 of 2019, Jeffrey C. Payne and Melanie T. Payne. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice by staff and will not be heard today. Additionally, there are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued or held and will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-71 of 2018, Pope and Land Enterprises Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the October 1st, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-71 of 2018 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-45 of 2019, WS Hotels LLC. This case has been continued by the staff until the November 5th, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-45 of 2019 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-52 of 2019, WLM Holdings LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the October 1st, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-52 of 2019 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-53 of 2019, Land Development Associates LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the October 1st, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-53 of 2019 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-56 of 2019, KO Management Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the October 1st, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-56 of 2019 will not be heard today. SLEP-4 of 2019, A1 Auto Coors LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the October 1st, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLEP-4 of 2019 will not be heard today. SLUP-11 of 2019, Milestone Hotel Management. This case was continued by the staff until the October 1st, 2019 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLUP-11 of 2019 will not be heard today. Additionally, Madam Chair and Board, we did get an email last week, and I did not put it on the agenda to continue rezoning case Z-43 of 2019, Embry Development Company LLC. So we would need a vote by the board to continue this case until your October hearing date.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we continue that till our October hearing.
I have a motion to be rejected. No, a second by skip, call a question. That's continued. Five to zero.
Thank you. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cellphone, please turn the volume off on your cellphone. The ringing does interfere at the broadcast and presentations. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement. If within two years, immediately preceding the filing of rezoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 more was made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this requirement is located on the table in the back of the room. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party that information is due to this board the Wednesday before this hearing. Any information submitted to this board after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by this board at their discretion. With that, Madam Chair, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Okay. I think that what we decided to do probably is started off with the reading of the small cell ordinance.
Okay.
And then I think Nancy's here. She's going to make a small presentation.
Nancy Gallagher with the County Attorney's Office is going to provide a courtesy presentation about the small cell ordinance that the Board of Commissioners will be considering at the end of the month.
All right, thank you. All right, Nancy.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me be here. As Brian said earlier, this is really for informational purposes only. The Planning Commission does not need to vote on this. It's just to give you an idea of what's going on since the 2019 legislature passed Senate Bill 66, which is called the Small Cell Bill or the Mini Cell Bill. Just to give you an overview, the amendment that we're proposing, and I'll get into a little bit more of that after I talk about the state law, it was, the amendment will be to Section 106 of the Cobb County Ordinances, so it's not a zoning amendment. It's the streets, sidewalks, and other public places. The proposed ordinance will add a new Article 7, which will govern the small cells in accordance with the State Act. The Act allows wireless service providers to install small antennas, or mini cells, as they're called, on existing poles in the right-of-way. They can construct new poles in the right-of-way, and they can replace existing poles if they're not structurally able to support the small cell. Any private property, attachment to private property would have to go through zoning, through normal zoning channels. So this is only for public rights-of-way. It affects all cities and counties in the state. If you can go to the picture. This just shows a little bit about how small cells are integrated into the system. They still need the towers, so they're not going to be taking down towers or probably be still adding towers, but the small cells are located on the traffic lights or the traffic signal poles or directional signs or new poles, you know, freestanding poles, some utility poles, and they can enhance the capacity in dense areas. So where you have a lot of people, for example, at the stadium, there will be probably a lot of small cells installed to handle, so there aren't as many dropped calls. So it's really a capacity more than it is a distance or range. So they have to be located close together to work. The next pictures, these show some examples of what they might look like. These are actually installed already in Atlanta. You can see one's on a street light, one looks like its own pole. There might be a light at the top of that one on the right. At any rate, they consist of an antenna on top of the pole and then an equipment box either built into the base of the pole or on the one on the right, you can see the equipment box is on the, is actually attached to the pole. And there's another picture, I think, that shows just a couple more examples. And the one, again, the one on the right has the equipment box on the pole. The antenna is up top, and that's right by the Capitol, as you can see. The Act, the SB 66, is very detailed. It's very long, not going to go into all the details, but just some key provisions are, I already mentioned it, it affects all rights-of-way of all counties and cities. We have to allow these in our rights-of-way. We have no choice. We do have, we have some restrictions. The law provides for height and size restrictions. There's a review and permitting process that they have to go through. So they have to go through, in this case, our DOT would handle it, just like they handle fiber and everything else that goes in the right-of-way. The DOT people would review the permits. And there are some fees that they have to pay. We think they're trivial, but they are structured according to the type of pole. So if you're going on an existing pole, it's less fee. If you want to install a new pole, there's a greater fee for permitting. And then there are also annual rates to access the right-of-way, and those are all spelled out in Senate Bill 66. There are shot clocks, which are simply a funny name for deadlines that both parties, the wireless providers, have to adhere to and the county has to adhere to. And those are all spelled out in the Act as well. Once a permit is issued by the county to install one of these, the provider only has six months unless they get an extension, and there's terms and conditions for that, but it must be installed within six months. And this is a good, good part of the law because that prevents different providers from, you know, racing from location to location and putting their, just to get the permit approved and holding that as a placeholder and speculative building and all that. So that's a good side of the, of the new law. The permits are good for 10 years, and they can be renewed. But again, they have to pay the annual rates, and if they haven't paid, there are provisions for us to, to hold up their, their new permits that they're requesting. So the purpose of doing the county ordinance is obviously to bring our policies, which aren't currently in line with the new law, to be, to mirror the new law, but also to give the county staff some guidance in how to handle the permitting process, how to handle the deadlines. It just sort of acts as a guide for them. It also grants authority to the county DOT to reject permits in certain circumstances in accordance with the state law, and it sets those out as well. It also has some aesthetic standards that we wanted, that if you want to enforce aesthetic standards under the state law, they must be published. So we have been working for quite a while now with a national expert counsel, and he has assisted in drafting these ordinances, and we're working with him to ensure that we're in compliance with state law, but we're also giving our staff the ability to exercise all the discretion that's permissible under the state law. So that's sort of a summary of the ordinance and the purpose for it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
First of all, Nancy, thank you for keeping us in the loop and explaining what this ordinance, I could just see us all riding around trying to figure out what was hanging off of these poles.
Exactly.
On the side of the road. And the other stuff hanging off too. So thank you for that. I understand that this is not a public hearing. We're not opening it, so we appreciate you being here and explaining. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity.
All right.
Yeah.
It's my understanding that it's not a public hearing.
This is not a public hearing. This is just a courtesy presentation for the board. If you have any questions, feel free to email me, and we'll be able to answer those.
All right, thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
All right, John, with that, we'll go into the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for September 3rd, 2019. Rezoning case Z-54 KL Porter requests a rezoning from GC to NRC for the purpose of traditionally neighborhood, commercial, and retail in Land Lot 107 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of Alabama Road, north of Sandy Plains Road. Staff recommends approval subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on June 3rd, 2019 with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Neighbor retail uses and professional offices only. Variance as listed in the zoning comment section, Starwater Management Division comments and recommendations, and Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-54? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that completes the consent agenda, Madam Chair and Board.
Thank you, John. Inspector Spornick, if I would allow me, I'd like to add a case to the consent agenda. John and I, the district commissioners, met with Saul Holdings, and I'd like to...
I'll read it in first.
If you'll read it in, then I'll ask if there's any opposition.
Okay. Rezoning case Z-48 of 2019, Saul Holdings LLC requests rezoning from NS to NRC for the purpose of an office, restaurants, indoor shop, shopping center, and land lot 228 of the 16th District. The property is located on the northeast corner of Ebenezer Road and Canton Road. Is the applicant present? The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-48 of 2019? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Okay. And with that, I'd like to add it with, to the consent agenda, with the stipulation with the staff comments and recommendation, and that would be deleting the whole tract to LRO. The applicant was agreeable to that. Also, Dave Braden, I had talked to him, it will go through the plan review process and any, he did get into the stream buffer with some of the grading, and that will be taken care of during the plan review process, so. So we'll add that to it. Well, yeah, I said all staff comments and recommendations.
Just to make it clear, your motions to delete LRO?
Delete to LRO, uh-huh, the whole tract. I don't think we have to read all that in. Staff comments, I don't have to read all that in.
I'll just say the staff comments.
Staff comments and recommendations, yeah. And LRO on the entire tract. Okay, so we need a motion and a second for the, that's been added to the consent agenda. I think we have to vote on that separate, if I'm correct.
You vote on, add to the consent, and then after that, you vote on the consent agenda.
So we need a motion to add that consent agenda.
First motion is to add Z-48 to...
Z-48 to the consent agenda, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we add Z-48 with the stipulations to, you know, to delete it to LRO, as you said, to the consent agenda.
Okay. And a second, call the question. So that's been added to the consent agenda, subject to staff comments and recommendations, and...
And now you vote on the consent agenda as revised.
Yes.
With that case in it.
And now we have to vote on the other consent agenda item.
And I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the consent agenda as revised.
Two motions, second call question. So the consent agenda is approved, five to zero.
Okay, those folks that were on consent, you're free to go. Just come back here in two weeks for the Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. Okay, moving into continued cases to be heard. Rezoning case Z-44 of 2019, Curly Family Homes LLC requesting rezoning from R-15, ONI, and NRC to RM-8 for the purpose of a townhome community in Land Lot 42 of the 17th District. The property is located on the northwest side of Nikajack Road, east of Floyd Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-44? Please keep your hands raised. Let the record show there's four people here opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Okay, Kay, we'll be ready when you are.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kevin Moore here on behalf of Curly Family Homes in this application for rezoning. And this was held last month with direction from the Planning Commission and specifically Planning Commissioner Porter with direction as to a couple of items as it relates to this site plan and really the item being the access. Where is the access going to be and whether we're going to provide additional access for this proposed 50-unit townhome community? And the site plan you see before you was the one that was presented last month, and based on a lot of internal discussion and review, we determined not to make a change in presentation to you, and I want to outline that for you. It's not that Curly Family Homes, as the applicant, sought to ignore the direction provided by the Planning Commission. It's just that they believe that this is the best from a community standpoint and based upon a number of reasons, and I'm going to go over those with you, but I just want to make sure that I've at least stated that, that it was not a reflection of Curly Family Homes, that they didn't take it seriously. It was very much evaluated, and I'll review that with you as well. First, as we discussed, on the left-hand side of the proposed site plan is what's labeled School Access Road, or which is really White Road, and it is a full public Cobb County road. It is not a privately owned road by the Cobb County school system. A little bit of background, the underlying property owner, the actual owner of this property, when that road was created in 2010 and 11, early 11, Cobb County approached the owner to build that road and acquire the right-of-way. It was not there. As part of those negotiations, which ultimately led to the county acquiring that property for over $80,000 to put in that road, it was critical that this property have access and have access to that public road, and it was included as, in part of those negotiations. So it's a public road, and this property and the future development of this property has every right to access it, though I do realize and understand that the Planning Commission was not directing us to remove access from that road, but I want to, once and for all, state it's a public road, and that was part of the negotiation to provide for this road out of county funds. Next, we spent a tremendous amount of resources, time, effort, money to undergo this rezoning process, which included two community meetings that were coordinated through the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. It included three changes to the site plan. All of those culminated in this proposal, in this proposal where we committed to those that attended the two community meetings, which were well-attended, in each instance, well, well-attended. I think the first meeting had over 50, close to 100 people in attendance. The second meeting had close to 50 people in attendance at those two meetings, where it was resoundly told to us, if we could do this project and have access only to White Road and have no access onto Nikajack, that that was the number-one concern, and it was expressed to us that way. And we had people, as I said before, come up to us after we had presented this change, thanking us for making the change and hearing them out. That level of, and it costs money to make these changes. It costs money to go through those meetings, and it costs money to ultimately present this, and Curly Family Homes feels like that level of commitment, we need to stick with it, and that's also part of it, that we made that commitment, and we don't want to be the ones to have to change it. Also, as it relates to access, if you place access on Nikajack and on White Road, that's a preference from where we stand. Sure, there's a preference for having the access at both locations. It's a preference perhaps from Cobb DOT. It's a preference from the school system. It's a preference maybe from some others, but we prefer to have it only on White Road, and I know that the residents that we met with in two major community meetings preferred for it to be on White Road. And in perspective, this is not a 300-unit or 200-unit or even 100-unit residential proposal. This is 50 townhomes. It's just a 50-unit residential community that we are proposing. It doesn't even justify or trigger a traffic study under Cobb DOT's rules. You have to get to 70 units to even trigger a traffic study as required. This is 50 units that are for-sale units per our stipulations. Only 10% can even be rented at any one time. This is just a residential community that's going to be adjacent to a school, and we see that in every location that we have schools. Think of the school closest to you, and think of, right away, you start going around, all of our schools are in neighborhoods, or if they're not, they're on a major road with a heck of a lot more traffic than what a small 50-unit residential project is going to place. So we kind of don't see the problem, to be honest. I can think of a number of locations. Maryetta High School, on a major road, but on the other major access point where the buses and school traffic comes in off of Manning Road, is right adjacent to two major subdivisions that have a lot more units than this. They don't seem to have a problem. It works itself out. You have sidewalks, you have crossings, you have safe, protected crossings for any of that. The traffic seems to get along just fine. We're all aware of how school traffic is impacted in the mornings, and we all deal with it every day. Laster High School, same thing. Residential neighborhoods adjacent to it that have streets coming right out to where those access points are, and it works just fine. Think of the, again, think of the school that's closest to you. It works just fine in all those instances. We don't put schools out in the middle of nowhere so that nobody can drive on the roads. We work with it. And here, as a 50-unit residential community, it is not going to have a negative impact on school traffic beyond what we all deal with every single day. Lastly, I do want to summarize a couple of the key stipulations that we think are important in the consideration of this. As I already mentioned, one, this has been limited to no more than 10% rental by choice. That's not by ordinance, it's by choice. We have also have extensive stipulations regarding the buffers to adjacent residential neighborhoods and residents, where we have agreed to a landscape review committee to be put in place to ensure that the landscape buffer will be heavily and densely landscaped to provide for complete visual screening. We have gone above and beyond to address the concerns that are, that we can without necessarily addressing the preference that we've been asked to address. With that, we believe that this is the best, when balancing the various interests at stake here, we believe this is the best way to go. That may be different from what the Planning Commission views as the best, but we did make a commitment, and Curly Family Homes wants to stick with that commitment. I'm going to reserve the balance of my time for Ms. Meyer, who I also know wants to speak on behalf of Mabelton Improvement Coalition.
Thank you. My name is Robin Meyer. I am the chairman of the zoning committee of the Mabelton Improvement Coalition, and this morning I want to restate our support for the current site plan with the one entrance on White Boulevard. As Kevin mentioned, this was, this outcome is the result of two public meetings that were hosted by the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. They were very well-attended, as Kevin relayed to you, and I want to, to explain to you how those people came to be at that meeting. We advertised both meetings through our website, our email newsletter, our Facebook page, our Facebook group, and totaling, we estimate about 4,000 individual accounts through all of those, through all those media. I also personally emailed folks who live in the neighborhood who had expressed interest in the zoning case by contacting our zoning, by contacting our zoning committee and alerted them to the meetings. We believe that this site plan is best. If there are two entrances, which is, which I understand is, is one of the proposals that will be considered, then this new street is going to become a major cut-through from Nikajack to the school and to the Kroger, in all honesty. What we will see on school mornings is a, is increased traffic, is the traffic coming up Nikajack, cutting through the new neighborhood, and then turning right on, on White Boulevard to get to the school. So the very street, the kids will also be cutting through this new neighborhood, will also be filling up with cars doing the same thing. Not only does it, does it not create a good neighborhood environment for the folks who live in this community, but it is no safer than the current situation. Also, if there are two entrances, the, the land that is dedicated to the second entrance on Nikajack Road will lose the tree cover that is a portion of the buffer that's enjoyed by the single-family homes on Nikajack Road, buffering them against the back of the Kroger Shopping Center. So underlying our, underlying our, our thinking on this development is how excited we are to see residential... to see residential development proposed for this site. It's presently half-zoned O and I. Somebody could walk into community development tomorrow and pull a building permit for a commercial development on this White Boulevard parcel. This is, this is the same parcel that, right now, does not have sidewalks on the subject property side of the street. When the county and the school board collaborated to put this road in, they put sidewalks on only one side. The, while the new development might, this new commercial development might well put sidewalks in on the, on the, on the subject property side, the traffic generated by that new development is completely unknown. One of the most common current uses for property in our community are for Amazon truck parking, where vacant parking lots seem to be filled with vans parked overnight, with their drivers arriving early in the morning to pick up their vans and go out and deliver Amazon packages. Well, that's just one use. The others in the O and I category are quite long, and I know you're well acquainted with them. So we believe that the bottom line is that this is a good project for this property, and we ask you to recommend its approval to the Board of Commissioners, and keeping in mind the overall need for good development, quality development in the Mableton area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
All right. We're in the opposition now.
I'm a resident 618 Nikajack. And if you look on this map, my house is the closest to the proposed development. They're to the south and east of the property. And I also attended both the community meetings, several meetings in the community with Gault Porter and Lisa Cupid. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to take the chance to voice the concerns that I have. Also, I have talked with my neighbors, Mrs. Patterson and Stephanie Woodward, on either side of me, and they're allowing me to represent them today since they were not able to attend. One of the things that was asked for in those community meetings was a reduction in density. He's come down from 55 units to 50 units, or 51, depending on what you're looking at. I believe that the proposed development is overly dense and out of character with the other single-family homes in the nearby neighborhoods. I think such a development would negatively impact existing resources, such as utilities and schools. I also have reviewed the materials prepared by Jason Campbell. I think he's a member of the Cobb County staff. I'm also concerned about safety. With more people come more dangers and more access. This is an issue for all sides of the property, including the single-family homes, the pool at Fellowship Road, and Floyd Middle School. I understand that a landscape buffer has been discussed in the stipulations. If this development occurs, I'm going to request that a privacy fence be constructed to protect those areas and the safety of the neighborhood, and that fence exceeds the six-feet minimum requirement. The third issue I have is aesthetics and quality. I'm concerned, I have looked at the elevations and pictures shown in the community meetings. I don't find them attractive. I'm also concerned about the quality. These are still townhomes behind a shopping plaza. I hope that you will oppose the plan based on density, safety, and quality. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm going to hand it over to someone to talk about the watershed issues, because my backyard does flood.
You'll get a chance, don't worry.
Good morning. My name is Roy Wilcox. My interest in this zoning request is from being a resident of the Nikajack Road area for 42 years, and also a member slash shareholder of the Fellowship Pool Incorporated, which is on the property just to the north, been a member of it for 22 years and on the board. I know there's family, one of the owners of the lots that's under consideration. They were members of Fellowship Incorporated, and I respect his and the owners of the other lots to their desire to sell the property. They're in one of those situations that the property is basically a landlocked island in that finding a section to enter or exit the property to be able to develop the property under construction makes it difficult to sell. Mr. Moore just stated that these 50 units will not have a negative impact on the schools and in the traffic. Less than a half a mile from this property to the north is a new development, Peacock Park, which is on Hicks Road. And it's already under construction. We'll have 35 homes with access onto Hicks Road, and we'll be going into the schools. Also, less than a half a mile to the northwest of this property is a new development, Willowcrest, which will have 154 homes in the form of townhomes, bungalows, and single-family homes. That's 189 new homes in the process of development. Both of these developments advertise as being close to bindings with easy access to I-285 and East West Connector. So the idea of 50 additional units not making an impact, we have to consider the additional 189 units that are under construction. The Curly Family Homes slated for this zoning on Z-44 on Nikajack and White Boulevard is considering the 50 condominiums, and if developed, this will make 239 total new homes anticipated for 2019, 2020, all within a half mile of each other. My first concern is going to be the impact of the possible number of children entering the elementary, middle, and high schools for this area. In the study completed by Cobb County Schools, they addressed the zoning commission that, and I quote, "Approval of this petition will cause concern for Cobb County School District, and it will result in the impact of enrollment for schools already over capacity." That Mableton Elementary is 108 over capacity. South Cobb School was 13 over capacity at the time of the study, but Floyd Middle School was under capacity by 196. But let me restate with the two developments underway, there will be 189 homes that would be feeders for these schools, and with the Curly Homes, 50 that would impact the elementary and the high school enrollment. I taught school for 34 years. There have been times I've had 40-plus children in a classroom, especially at the beginning of the year, when you just don't anticipate, don't know how many are going to be coming to the school. And then I had to wait until a couple of weeks, until the enrollment settled down and for those numbers to change before we could get those children out of the classroom and to a smaller setting. There were times that these children were sitting on the floor for the first week until we could get desks. That's the impact when you have a large number of people with children coming to the school, and you just don't have the room for it. And then, once you get the children into a setting, then you have to add the desk so that you can meet the capacity as recommended by the state. I'm sure the commission can understand the difficulty that children had trying to be comfortable and have a decent setting to learn. Once additional teachers are hired, the classroom teachers decrease in maximum allowed for the classroom, but still makes for a full-class space. I'm sure that commissioners could see the challenges of an at-and-over-capacity school in regards to supplies, which runs short, and then also the books that we have to look and try and get. Also, the greater challenge when you have an over-capacity school is getting the children and students to safety if a fire or a threatening storm should occur. If you've ever experienced as a child the, doing a exit or just training to, because of possible fire, you see how everybody has to line up and all the challenges that go with that. Next has been, has been addressed the possibility of an entrance on Nikajack Road to this development. Where the entrance, possible entrance would be on Nikajack would, is a blind curve coming from the west, which is Floyd Road. Entering that curve towards the entrance, a driver at 35 miles an hour, once he or he has seen the entrance, has three seconds to stop if someone's entering. It was recommended by the commission that there could be a right turn only at that street. This would be a good plan for their, but there are some of us who may not want to make a right turn, because turning left onto Nikajack would be the best route to get to the East West Connector. And I'm sure you saying, before Sunday, I was at the public shopping center on South Cobb Drive. It's a right turn only to get onto South Cobb Drive. The person in front of me decided to go around the concrete barrier, go ahead and go left, cross two lanes going to south, and then also the traffic. So putting that barrier in, there are some of us who would just say, I'm just going to go around it. It is my, sorry, it is my understanding that the Willowcrest development on Floyd will have an exit with right turn only on to Floyd, and this will direct traffic towards Nikajack as the closest route to get onto the East West Connector. This will increase the traffic flow on Nikajack during rush hours and during the school hours. Less than a half mile from Floyd Road are two streets, Shannon Green Circle and St. Patrick. These intersections are three-way stops. Police have received a number of complaints from Nikajack residents and of drivers running these stop signs. And this is not distracted driving, it is a slowed-down speed on the freeway.
Sir, you're running out of time.
I'll get to it. All right, finally.
You have actually run out of time.
Pardon?
You've run out of time.
Can I make one stormwater? From the stormwater management, the report comments that they say that there is a potential unknown drainage problems that exists for the developments downstream from this site, which is the Fellowship Incorporated. I'm not opposed to the family selling this property. I do wish the commission would really consider the impact it's going to have on the schools and on the street.
Thank you.
I'm Charles Sprayberry with the Cobb County School District. Thank you, Madam Chair and Board of Planning Commission. Appreciate your time. I want to talk about Z-44 on two specific areas. Approval of this petition will cause concerns for CCSD, as it will result in impact on enrollment of Mableton Elementary School, which is already over capacity by 85 students at this time. Additionally, we have concerns about proposed entrance strictly being off of White Boulevard instead of off Nikajack, as previously proposed. Entrance via White Boulevard causes significant concerns on safety, since it is the only access to Floyd Middle School for staff and car riders. Peak times being 8:30 in the morning to 9:15 and 3:45 to 4:30 in the afternoon. We are concerned about the safety. Concerns I heard earlier about, concerns about being with a Nick, with a entrance off of Nikajack and White Boulevard that would be through traffic. I would suggest that we would look at, someone look at signage for no-through traffic for that particular area. I'm sure there are other things you can look at too, to improve on that as well. But we do not support this as it's presented at this time.
Thank you. The public hearing is closed at this point, and it's back to this board and its calls.
Thank you. As you know, we heard this last month, and we requested that they put in the second entrance to Nikajack.
Madam Chairman, just may I interrupt? Since the opposition went over by several minutes in deference to the applicant, you might want to allow them to have a few extra minutes if there's, if they want to rebut anything that was said, but that's.
Kevin, you wanted a couple of extra minutes.
With the, with the public hearing we had last month, as well as today's presentation, no further comment from us is needed. We've addressed all of those items. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Good pitch. You know, we, we did it for two reasons. One is, you know, putting all this, and what they're proposing is a high-density residential project under Cobb County Code, which does not fit the land-use plan for the part that's owned commercially, or the land-use plan for the part that's owned residentially. And then we're looking, and then they're proposing to put this high-density, all coming off of a street that backs up with school traffic. Now, they say, hey, we negotiated for that to be a public right-of-way when we sold the land to the county. And I'm sure that's true, and we're not saying they can't access it. We're also not saying that they negotiated to put a high-density residential project on this road when they sold it either. Also, they wouldn't even be able to put residential and access that if it wasn't a public road. So had the road not been put in for the school, and that's why it was put in, we wouldn't be even talking about any access on there. We would be talking about all the access on Nikajack. So, and if you look at an O and I, chances are, although not required, chances are that if it was developed, they would also develop with access into the parking lot of the shopping center. And then a whole lot of the traffic would come right to the four-way stop at White. And I wish they had enough land to come right to that four-way stop, because I don't think it would be nearly the issue if that's where they were accessing White at the four-way stop versus where they are accessing it, which is the middle where traffic queues into the school and, and traffic coming in and out. To me, it's reasonable, you know, to put in the Nikajack access. I understand it is a blind curve right now, and one of the requirements that DOT has put, that is, if they can't meet what they refer to as site distance, that it would be right-in, right-out only. And I would add that it should have a median in it to prevent people from turning, because we all know, as, as the one speaker said, that those pork chops they put in kind of look like a pork chop, just don't work. They aren't well-designed, and people go around those all the time. So, you know, I get that those don't work, but putting a median in the center of the road's a thing that does work, and they have enough room to do that if they can't get the full access. But, you know, it appears the applicant doesn't want to come with that. So they want to come in saying, we want you to grant us high-density residential way above the land-use plans that are in place, and we want to dump it all on to a less-than-ideal location on a street. Now, normally, if you combine the land-use plan that are here, being part of it's in a neighborhood activity center, and you take the highest-density thing that you can put in a neighborhood activity center, which is 5.0 units per acre, and then you look at the part that's low-density residential, and you factor that at the max density of 2.5, you end up with 33 units. Now, there is nothing here that says that you would ever give them max density with this configuration, location, all of that. That's all why, that's all why you have a density range with everything. You just don't go to the maximal. So, so my way of thinking on this is, if they want just one access point, they need to bring that density way down. Something probably around three units an acre, which would get them 27 units. And that's maybe still a little high on that end, but, but that's what they should look at if they're, if they're unwilling to put in a second access point, which appears they are. Then, to me, that should look at. Something else from our hearing last month was, we requested revised elevations, because some of the elevations had a fair amount of brick, some of them had none, no brick on them. They were inconsistent with each other and just didn't present an overall look. They failed to do this, and I talked to Kevin last week about that as well, and we still don't have them. So. So, I really don't think we have anything to move forward with this case. You know, it's, they haven't come, so, so what I think we should do is give them direction again, and send them back and let them work. Either bring us a plan if you only want access to, to White with a maximum of twenty-seven units, or if you want both accesses, and that would be an RA four plan with no variances, or if you want RA six, give us both access points so that we aren't dealing with this choke there, and give us some good elevations, which we don't have yet. So, and obviously thirty days wasn't long enough for them to do elevations. I'm wondering if we should hold it till maybe November to give them time to, to do it.
I think we probably need to get Kevin up here and see if they are willing to do it, since it's already been held thirty days, and they didn't do it. Kevin might have an explanation as to why.
Well, he gave us an explanation, but they didn't, they didn't come in with a lower density. We didn't give them direction if they're gonna just have one access to come back with a lower density.
So maybe-
And I don't, you know, and, and quite frankly, I don't really care. They didn't address any of our stuff from last time, and they had no plan to really address any of it, so-
I guess, yeah, I guess I care, because Robin got up and, and, which is unusual, and supported it, which is very unusual for the Mabelton. And I know you realize that.
Yeah.
That they, so, you know, I don't actually-
I realize that.
I think we should work and try to-
And I was in meetings where there were the very local, you know, people there who didn't want Nickajack, you know, and that's the fear that we often see that, oh, we're gonna have this big rush of traffic come through on it. You know, but, but with the, but with the school, we have a broader concern, and we have heard from the school board and, and the PTA that, that they have real safety concerns. You know, I know we had talk of, if we put in this road, it's gonna become a cut-through, but the reality right now is the cut-through is right through the Kroger parking lot. So are we a lot, I think we're a lot better off if people are traveling down a public road that's designed for it rather than jumping through parking spaces, and that parking lot's not even designed to go straight through. You enter it, and then the parking spaces come all the way out, and then you have a gas station, and you have a car wash, and that, so it's not like you can even drive just straight through that parking lot, although people do it all the time, so I don't-
So you think we ought to hold it until November?
You know, and I'll leave that open, but, you know-
Do you have any, let's see if we have any other discussion?
Sure.
Any other discussion?
Excuse me, yeah, I'll, I'll just add that, you know, last month, we didn't talk about the density particularly because of the direction. I like your analysis on the, on reducing the density down into the twenties somewhere. I would even tend to go further below twenty-seven if you propose that, but I like that, and so I just want to make that comment.
Yeah, I concur. I, I think that, and the point that Mick was supportive of this version with the one-drive, I think they would be more supportive at, at a lower density. And, you know, here, what, I mean, having heard everything that was said today and last month, I think that, you know, at the top of my list of important comments is the safety issue in school, which seems to only be addressed by the second driveway or the reduced density, so I think it's perfectly reasonable. I, I would caution this, this commission against the recommendations that we've made recently where we gave some direction and asked them to produce something before the BOC, because in, in my, in a recent experience, that hasn't happened. We don't, I don't like the idea of the applicants just taking the same thing that we expressed a dislike for and bringing it to the BOC without any change. So I would be wholly supportive of holding, of holding this, and sixty days seems perfectly reasonable to me, given the circumstances.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Appreciate all the comments. Part of my problem here is I don't purport to know this area as well as any of the people who've spoken here today, and a lot of very intelligent people have analyzed this and come up with some differing solutions, though I do note that both the proponent and at least two opponents spoke out against the, the second exit solution for various reasons, including line-of-sight reasons. So it seems like we should probably consider doing something off of just simply White Boulevard, just a one entrance, one exit solution. As far as density, I would prefer to see it at some lower density. I don't necessarily think it needs to go this far down, a- as is being suggested, but some lower density. And i- in that regard, what I note is that, again, I don't know the history of this property, it's, it's time on the market, what folks have tried to do with it, what's feasible. I don't purport to know the area nearly as well as Commissioner Porter, as Commissioner Cupid, obviously, as, nor do I know it as well as counsel for the applicant, or certainly not as well as the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. So it seems like we need to get those people in a room to figure out what's feasible, what can be done at, at some lower density with a one-exit solution. As far as the school issue goes, and the, what, what I understand to have heard is this is not the bus entrance and exit, this is a car entrance and exit for teachers, staff, and folks who choose to drive their kids to school, which frankly, I wish there was less of, but that's another issue for another day. I, I think if more people took the bus, we'd have far less of a traffic issue in this county, but that's, that's not really directly germane to what we're doing here today. It's a personal comment. The, so again, I think the idea of a continuance is a good one with a view to hopefully coming up with something that's feasible, that, that satisfies the, satisfies the various constraints on this property, and, and meets the, meets with feasibility, and, and meets the concerns expressed as, as far as getting to a, a lower density.
Kevin, did you want to?
Thank you. I do feel obligated on behalf of my client to state that a further continuance with direction that clearly my client's not gonna do, just to continue it until by force of will, that they must do this, or we'll just continue it forever, is a complete denial of their due process rights. They have a right to present an application for it to be heard, and a recommendation, whatever that is, be made, but they don't have, they can't be denied the process. And further continuing when we've already evaluated the access and presented it, and asking us to cut our density in half, I mean, that's not realistic, it's not gonna happen. That's a denial of the process that we're due. We can propose a strip club at this location, and we have the right to the process, whether it's something that the planning commissioner, the board of commissioners ultimately do not like, do not want, and want to deny it, fine, but we're at least entitled to the process. And I ha- I have to say that on behalf of my client, because further continuing it from my vantage point is a denial of that process.
Thank you, Kevin. I think we know what to do, since the applicant has stated that they're not going to proceed with anything else. John?
You know, based on what, what the applicant's representatives has said, you know, the plan will not change in two months.
There's no reason to hold it.
So the, the planning commission can consider approving it, denying it, or deleting it into a category you think's appropriate.
Okay. All right, so it's back to God. Thank you, no.
Well, I understand what you're saying, John, but I, I see this direction as a totally different direction from anything that they've given before. I think there's a clarity in the options here, and maybe it doesn't get down to twenty-seven, but I think that, you know, I don't think that we're denying process here.
I understand that, but the applicant has clearly stated that they're not gonna cut any more units.
No, they're not gonna do anything to hold it. The applicant just now said, if we hold it, they're not doing anything else.
Well, then, why didn't they tell us that last time?
Well, he just did, it just told you.
Well, and they had said last time they'd bring us elevations, and they didn't even do that, so I don't know that, and, and they've been promising that for a long time to do the elevations, and even before the thing. I have a question for Brian.
Yes, sir.
Is it true that if the planning commission does not approve a subdivision, it cannot be approved under state law? Planning commission is required, they're required to have planning commission approval of subdivisions?
Well, from code, the planning commission is a recommending body. Only determinations can be made by elected officials, which is the board of commissioners. I would have to go and look to see if there's a state law that, that supersedes that, or what our own code says, or what the zoning procedures act says, but this commission is, is just a recommending body.
Right, right. But I'm, I'm pretty sure that that's part of state law that says the planning commission has to approve all subdivisions. So, you know, if we send it through as a denial-
We don't have to approve all subdivision, because if a tract of land comes through, it's already zoned, and they get building permits, we don't ever see it.
Right, but that's, I don't know that we follow state law with that.
Every subdivision.
My point is, I don't know that we're, that the county's been following state law, but-
But we need a motion right now.
I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll make a motion, you know, regarding Z forty-four, that given that there's no access to Nickajack Road, that it be, that a deletion to RA four subject to all the following. Maximum of twenty-seven units, no variances, site plan to be approved by the district commissioner, elevations to be approved by the district commissioner, all front elevations to have at least fifty percent brick or stack zone, a brick or stack stone, water table to be provided on the other three elevations, sidewalk along White Boulevard frontage, garages to be used primarily for the parking of vehicles with only incidental storage that does not interfere with the parking of vehicles, and all stipulations in applicant's attorney's letter dated July thirty-fourth, July thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, not otherwise in conflict with expressly the site plan, density and elevations are expressly not approved in that thing, and that's the motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We need a second for discussion.
I'll second.
All right, we have a second for discussion, okay. Do anybody need discussion?
Andy just asked me if there was gonna be sidewalk on Nickajack, and I, I guess we'll throw in sidewalk on Nickajack. I'm not sure if it's there right now already or not. I think it is, okay. Well, I'm getting a shake that it's already there, so I don't think we need to add that.
Okay.
I thought it was, but it wasn't positive.
So we have a, a motion and a second for RA four, for twenty-seven lots, correct? All right, call the question. And that's proof forty-one with me opposed. Yeah, yeah. All right, John, we ready for the next one?
Yes, ma'am. Resonating case Z sixty-four, Cobb County Board of Commissioners, request a rezoning from R twenty to NRC for the purpose of NRC permitted uses and landlot four-seventy of the nineteenth district. The property is located on a northeast intersection of Ernest Barrett Parkway and Macklin Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed, resounding case Z sixty-four? Let the record show is no one opposed. Hey, Jason?
Jessica, we ready when you are?
All right, wonderful. Good morning, everyone. This morning, I'm bringing forward a county-initiated rezoning. This is for the property located at the northeast corner of Macklin Road and Barrett Parkway.
Jessica, just state your name for the record.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, Jessica Gwynne, Cobb County Community Development.
Thank you.
So the property is about just shy of an acre and a half, it's one-point-four-eight acres, and it's currently zoned R, R twenty. What's being requested is to rezone the property to NRC. This is a county-owned property that's been identified by the property advisory board for surplus, so prior to selling the property, we wanted to rezone it to bring it in line with the, the other zoning in the area, and also with the future land use map recommendation for that to be Neighborhood Activity Center. This is in the Macklin Road corridor study, so of course, anything that comes forward to be developed on that property would be required to be developed in line with the Macklin, um, Macklin Road guidelines, the design guidelines, and I'm glad to answer any questions you all have.
Is any opposition to this request? Hearing seen no opposition, it's back to this board. Any comments? Okay, Freddie.
Yes, just so I understand correctly, my understanding of the, of the law is that a county is not subject to zoning, in the sense that the county can do what it chooses without regard to how the property is currently zoned.
Oh, that's my understanding, of course, I'd like the county attorney's office to give it their... Are we in agreement, Brian?
Yes, that is correct. That's our opinion too, county-owned properties not to be zoned.
So the, the rezoning request is for purposes of facilitating a resale of the property?
That's correct.
Okay, but in this, in this sense, in terms of what's been presented, there's been absolutely no presentation as to who the purchaser might be, or what the specific use might be of the property, correct?
Right, that's correct, and of course, this would, if it's, you know, whether it's rezoned or not, it's gonna be marketed and sold just as any other county property would be, so it would be open for, for bids. I believe the staff recommendation includes in there a recommendation that you all could stipulate that this come back, the use as well as the site plan come back for approval by the board of commissioners, at which, you know, at the point that it is sold, and there is a use proposed for it.
Okay, and, and that no site plan showing any proposed buildings has been submitted as part of this application, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and no development plans, including access points, parking areas, buffer areas, or anything of the sort, have been submitted in, in accordance with this request? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Those are all the questions I have.
Okay.
I do have a-
Go ahead.
Couple of questions. I see this Turner Road, which is still R twenty. I assume the county probably owns Turner Road?
I know, and John, could you speak to, I know there was a DOT comment about Turner Road.
The old right-of-way for Turner Road kind of, not, yeah, in that part, was purchased by the adjacent landowner a couple of years ago.
Okay, okay.
But there's a part of the right-of-way that's near Macklin, that little trapezoid that's still right-of-way right there.
Okay.
Any other questions?
We don't have anybody from DOT, oh.
Amy's out there.
Amy, did you come up?
You have a question for Amy?
I have a question for-
Amy Diaz, DOT.
How confident is DOT that this really is access, and you're not gonna need more of this road to do a widening here, or something like that? It just seems, you know, anybody who knows that intersection knows it backs up pretty bad, so it seems like, you know, the, DOT may need more right-of-way at some point here, and I'm just throwing this out there, it doesn't really affect the zoning per se, but, but for the board of commissioners, if they're thinking of selling it, should they be taking a little bit of this off for more right-of-way for, since they already own it, so they don't have to go back later and spend a fortune purchasing it after something's developed, and you take away the economic benefit of it?
The zoning cases are sent through the entirety of DOT, I'm the kind of point of contact, but they do go through the district engineer, who got a chance to look and comment on the zoning, and they didn't have that comment. To my knowledge, there is no currently proposed project that even in a future spot that's proposed for that intersection, and that is why that right-of-way was not requested to be held for us. If the district commissioner wants to have further discussions with their district engineer or me, and ask, and talk about that, and if they're open to that, then that'd certainly be something we'd be willing to discuss, but that conversation has not happened to my knowledge.
Okay, looks like Jessica may have something to say about that.
Yes, Erica Parrish sent us an email to John and I last week, speaking specifically- Yes, Erica Parrish sent us an email to John and I last week, speaking specifically to this, and Erica's email indicated that there should be sufficient right-of-way on the Macklin roadside to accommodate a dual right-turn lane, the way that it's currently situated. We probably would need some additional right-of-way on the Barrett Parkway side, but those are items that DOT can identify what right-of-way would be necessary, and we can just not include those in the sale of the property.
Okay, I just wanna make sure somebody was thinking about it. Fred had brought it up at the, at the work session, and I wanted to make sure we didn't miss that point.
Fred, you have another question?
Yeah, just so you'll know, I do drive home that way sometimes, in preference to the I-75 or Highway 41 route to the northwest part of the county, and it's my observation that about 1,000 to 1,500 feet before the intersection of Barrett Parkway and Macklin Road, this is a major sticking point during rush hour traffic, and that it starts actually back before the funeral home, which is identified as the, I guess, O-N-I parcel here? Is that correct? That it, it starts before there, and actually even before Bankstone, before the three-way with Bankstone, and it continues to the Barrett Parkway, and then once you get to Barrett Parkway, Macklin, Macklin flows, once you pass Barrett Parkway, and that traffic is flowing generally during rush hour times. Once you get that traffic on to Ernest Barrett, whether it's, I think, north or south at that point, but in either direction, it flows. So, my little observation is that the folks wanna get home at the end of the day from work, and from school, and from whatever, whatever else they're doing, and that's part of what they're asking us to do here, is help protect their ability to get home, and that it is essential that we do have a, we, we can move so many cars, we, we would have to come back, in my opinion, all the way to Bankstone, and create one more lane to get people to move through that more efficiently, but that is, right now, a major sticking point. But you're saying the DOT denies there's any traffic there at the end of the day?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Can, can you clarify that for me?
I'm saying that, to my knowledge, there is no existing project that required right-of-way from this development, or this, this proposed zoning, because it's not actually a development, and that is why DOT did not ask for additional right-of-way. It has, according to our GIS system, it has sufficient right-of-way for our minimum standards. Now, yes, we all know that there is traffic, especially during peak hour, on both Macklin and on Barrett Parkway. Glad to take your comments back to the district engineer and see if something further needs to be identified.
I, I, I think we, yeah, well, I, I think that does need to be done, and, and again, I think we've done a good job of actually moving traffic to a point within a few hundred feet of where that funeral home is, and then Barrett Parkway has in so many respects served its purposes and moves traffic. Macklin, once we get the cars past this intersection, moves again for a significant period of time till you get out near Old Lost Mountain, which is another mess of another sort, but it seems to me that does need to be looked into. I appreciate your, your comments.
One quick, one quick question. How far out does the DOT project projects of this, of this kind? Does that mean that you're not aware of anything in the next five years, 10 years?
Ten years. Yeah, they, they have a SLOs set up for the next SLOs where we identify projects, but SLOs where we fund most of our projects through that program, they have to be specifically identified within the special use land ta, special use local options.
So, there's nothing projected in the next 10 years?
Yeah, not to my knowledge, but apparently, a dual right-turn lane was discussed specifically with COMDEV outside of, of my representation, I didn't get a copy of that email, so that there may be something that's being looked at for that further SLOs that has not yet come through that I saw.
Okay, and may, may I make a comment? First of all, let me remind everyone that this board is a recommendation board, we have really no authority, not really, we can make recommendations and send it on to the Board of Commissioners, but we don't have any authority. The Board of Commissioners are the Board of Commissioners of Roads and Revenue, they take care of the money and the roads, not us. The money is in a fund, it's countywide money, it's not just money that was set aside for this area. So, this is surplus piece of property, we don't know what they're gonna do with it, other than they want to sell it. There's no development that I know of right now taking place, so it, it would seem to me that we pass it on to the Board of Commissioners as surplus piece of property, as we have done in the past, that would be my comment.
I would just add one thing, if you could check the comprehensive transportation plan, which goes out farther than 10 years, to see if this was identified in that as a project as you guys go through.
Go ahead.
But that's really not directly in here, unless you know the...
I'll, I'll just add to that, the email from Erica Parrish last week, as you all know, currently, the CTP is being updated, the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, and through that update, this intersection along with several other intersections in the county has been identified as one that is a congestion point, so there is recognition that there's a congestion point there, but there are no short-range projects planned for this intersection.
I also would like to just address, one of the reasons why the intersection of two major thoroughfares like this can sometimes be a congestion point is not necessarily a lack of lineage, but it's the fact that you have conflicting vehicles in two directions. I would have to look into it to see if a turn lane would be effective, or really, is it that Macklin is backing up because it doesn't have enough green time, but then if you take green time away, give it to Macklin, you take it away from Barrett, and what it does to Barrett, it's all a very big balancing act.
Thank you.
See, you know, I, I recognize the desire for the county to change the zoning on this, to make it more attractive to, to sell. Normally, though, when we change zoning, and this was pointed out at our work session last week, we, we have a site plan in front of us, we know what the use is going to be, or proposed to be, and we have an opportunity to put in buffers, and so on and so forth. We don't have a site plan because we don't have a use, because we don't have a buyer, right? Simple as that. So, the, the suggestion was made at the work session, and I think it makes sense, is to, if, if this were moved ahead, and, and recommended for approval, that one of the stipulations include not only the site plan and use to be approved by the Board of Commissioners, but also to be reviewed and recommended approval by the Planning Commission. I'm all for seeing this part, this parcel get sold, if that's what the county wants to do, but only after, excuse me, only after DOT has gone back and made sure that there's no, you know, gonna be further use of, you know, of, of this property for the, the intersection. I lose my voice, I'm sorry.
Well, my position would be that I have all the confidence in the world in the Board of Commissioners that can handle this. This is not the first tract of land they've ever handled a surplus. I know, I think they know what they're gonna do, they know that, without me having to go back and look at the site plan, my position would be to pass it on, let them make the major decisions on it. So, with that, I'm gonna make a motion, I'm gonna make a motion, well, as it, I can make a motion, I would like to make a motion that we approve this as approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for discussion, discussion.
You know, I, I really wish the county would think more about it, because this seems like a perfect intersection for grade separation to me, in the future, and if you do that, you need this land, just, I wanna make sure they're thinking before they're selling something off as excess that may not be, but as far as, you know, the rezoning, if, if they decide they wanna sell it, it's obviously their prerogative, and that, so I think, you know, with, with the motion, I think I would wanna see, you know, the, the site plan come back through the full process, whether it comes as other business through the full process, or, or what.
The music is nice. Just what we needed. We have a motion and a second.
Can I be heard, please?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I was, so, listen, can you turn the music off?
I'll wait till the music ends, thanks. Okay, so, previously, in discussions about this rezoning application, Planning Commissioner Gunther referred to this as the Marvin Gaye rezoning request, and what he meant by that, and he got more specific, he said "What's Going On?", which was the name of a Top 40 Marvin Gaye song, and the reason he said...
Just to add, as a 1971 Big Head, yes.
There you go, thank you. And he, he did that, since I, I'm very partial to 70's rock, having grown up in that era, so I would fully understand the context, but that's my problem with this, is the essence of what we're saying is, the county doesn't have to ever submit a site plan, the county doesn't ever have to tell us what they're gonna do. When, when the county owns the property, we don't have to plan, and I find that offensive as a member of this commission. I think this commission should look at things and not merely pass them to the Board of Commissioners. I know that we're primarily a junior varsity Board of Recommendations, but by the same token, I anticipate that we will actually seriously consider things, vet, vet things, and help things move in the right direction before they get to the Board of Commissioners. I think that's part of the reason we're here, and I think we do a disservice to our role to simply say if the county owns the property, it doesn't have to go through that process. Or it can get a rezoning, subject to coming back and talking about things again later when a specific site plan comes up. By the same token, I am sympathetic to the fact that this doesn't necessarily constitute a great piece of property to get built upon as R-20, given the major intersection that's right there. But I, I just simply would refer to the code that we're supposed to abide by, or the ordinances we're supposed to abide by, including the requirements for rezoning applications. Under Subpart B of Section 134 hyphen 121, it provides that the applicant shall submit a current boundary survey and plot plan to scale, prepared by a registered surveyor, registered engineer. Such plans shall also include such other information thereon, as may be required by the Planning Division and Zoning Division, including preliminary plans for development, building locations, parking areas, access points, et cetera. And I, I acknowledge and pointed that out, that that's a little bit circuitous, because the county is the owner of the property, can then always say that, well, our zoning division didn't require anything of us, because we don't have to go through and play by the same rules. I, I note again, that the county does not have to abide by the same zoning restrictions a, a private unit user does, as long as the county owns the property, but what we're doing here, in essence, and again, this is more, this is more procedure and process than this, what ultimately happens, perhaps, but I, I think the procedure and the process is important, and I don't think we should completely exempt the county, who's not being restricted in its use of the property, but, but is only, what, what the county's doing is trying to create, create value for county surplus land by having it rezoned when we don't know who the end user is going to be. So, we're, we're in essence, giving that end user a pass because he's buying property from the county. That just concerns me greatly that we're, we're saying, that we're saying the county doesn't have to play by the same rules anybody else does. It also bothers me greatly, because up until, I believe, this year, county-owned property was not even eligible for rezoning. If, if property was owned by the county, I, I think we changed that ordinance earlier this year, is my recollection, but...
No, we didn't.
I'm, I'm welcome to hear from the county attorney on that, but, but the point is, it, it's kind of, we're, we're in a situation here where the county doesn't have to have the property zoned, any specific thing for its use, it's only for the purposes of facilitating a sale, and it seems to me the right way to go about that is to sell properties subject to rezoning, if they're, if they want to, under a contingency, whereas here, it appears that a rezoning would be appropriate, but it seems like the right way to go about it is to still come in with plans, so we can actually do intelligent planning, instead of just saying, okay, it's the county, the county gets a pass, and will think about it later. And that, and in this context, that concern is amplified by the fact the county has admitted that this is a congestion point in traffic, and we're just not dealing with it. So, I, I cannot support this. Just real quick before you go, John pointed out that you forgot to include staff comments and recommendations in your motion.
Thank you, John, I was gonna go back and...
So, second's good with adding that.
Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to stay for the record that I have full confidence in the Board of Commissioners' ability to, you know, review these, and that, but that discussion up here doesn't have to do with whether we have confidence in the Board of Commissioners to make a decision, it's the, I think it's the reason why each of our commissioners has asked us to sit up here, so we can weigh in, and we can discuss these. I commend Fred for bringing up the points he's brought up. I may or may not agree, but I think the Board of Commissioners need to hear it, and that's why we're here, so...
I think that's exactly why we're here, is to pass it on to the board, knowing that you can talk to Kelly, she appointed you, and that, you know, if you don't like the way she's handling anything, be sure and call and tell her that you don't like the procedure, so I think there are avenues...
Madam Chairman, that's a cheap shot, th, 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 this is not a question of what anything Kelly is doing or not doing, this is a question of whether the county doesn't have to play by any of the same rules as a private developer when it seeks to reclassify property.
All right, I'm gonna call the question.
Could we restate the motion, and do we need to stay the motion with those?
The motion was to approve it as presented, subject to all staff comments and recommendations. So, that fails four, three to two, so it's back to this board, either pass it on, is that another vote, or do we need to pass it on without a recommendation? Okay, so we need another vote.
May I make a motion at this time? My motion would just be we continue this, pending receipt of either a contract or some indication of what the future use is, so we can adequately plan and provide comments, as is our function.
Do we have a second, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second for our comment.
We have a second for comment.
I would probably say, since we have no idea, this, I've seen county property take years to sell, I assume they don't have a buyer lined up, or they probably be, be telling us, you know, what they're at, so I'd hate to have the case continued for years, but one, one suggestion that was made is that we could approve the category, subject to them coming back through other business through the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners, so it gets a full process for the site plan and the, and the parts of application that are deficient.
Yeah, you could.
So, that's...
But by doing that, it gives the confidence to the potential buyer also, of what the new zone would be, rather than just, it's totally contingent on, on an action on that front. So, I like that, that approach.
So, I think you wanted to add, subject to...
Well, it would be different than Fred's motion.
Planning Commission to see it before...
Fred's motion's just a continuance.
Building permits are issued, is that my understanding?
Basically, the approval was another condition. Right, I'm just saying, that would be my reason for voting against a continuance, is it could go on forever.
And the motion on the floor is to hold the case, right, Commissioner Blount?
All right, let's call the question, this is to hold the case.
Okay.
So, that motion fails, so we have to have another motion?
Substitute motion.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
That I recommend approval of Z-64, subject to all staff comments, that the site plan and use be reviewed by the Planning Commission, and, and then approved by the Board of Commissioners, the building in sight to meet the Macklin Road Design Guidelines, Water and Sewer Division comments and recommendations, and Department of Transportation comments and recommendations.
All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second. If we just clarify, it comes back to the Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners, as an other business item.
Yes, I should've said that, as another business item.
As other business.
Yes, thank you.
All right, call the question. And that finally approves 4 to 1 with Fred opposed.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I understand.
I do understand, I don't understand, and I didn't mean for that to be a cheap...
That's fine, I accept that. I understand, I understand.
She does it when she means to.
I understand, I understand.
Madam Chair, that, that completes our printed agenda, but I do have two more things here. First, I wanna wish you a happy birthday, happy 20th birthday.
Oh, thanks, thanks. Thanks. And we want to say that today is Jason's last day?
Yeah, and that's the second day I have. It's a dark day for me, because this is Jason's last planning commission day.
It's very sad. Yeah, we've known Jason a long time, and we're going to wish him...
I wish him well in the future.
Okay. Thank you for the birthday wishes. And so we have other business to...
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the Planning Commission as presented for August 26th and August 14th.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. Call the question. The minutes are approved, 5 to 0. Thank you, everyone.
And there's cake getting a morning's sun. Oh, thank you.
10:30 cake, all right. Where's the...
Across the hall.